Okay, I will call to order the rigor meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, March fifteenth, 2021. And as always the case, I would ask that you all please rise for brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as we meet in what is certainly a turbulent and troubled world in a lot of respects, given the pandemic that we continue to battle and the need for vaccine in all corners of our country. And we are ever so appreciative and thoughtful of those who are working so diligently at both the federal and state and local levels in trying to bring this situation under control. Since our last meeting, we are ever encouraged that the Kane County Board under Corinne Perrag has made steps to take over the former Sam's Club Building in Randall Road and turn that into the Kane County Central Area for vaccinations for the coronavirus. And so, given that, we want to express a moment of thanks and appreciation and thanks for that and ask for a special blessing upon that building that those who will enter it and receive their vaccinations will return to strong health and will retain strong health, whichever the case may be. Tonight also, we want to remember all those from our country who are serving in the foreign government, serving in foreign countries in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. We just ask a special blessing to be showered upon every one of these men and women. And as we always do, we want to ask for vision and understanding and consideration as we go about the decisions to be made here tonight, asking that the special operation of the council is, is that we try to find the very best visions and future for our community. Tonight, as always, we also want to remember those who are in ill health, regardless of whatever disease they may be happening or injury they may have recently sustained. And we just ask that all of our residents return to quick health. We ask for all these blessings, and we certainly ask for blessing upon all of our city employees who are going about tonight, clearing roads, responding to emergencies. And we just said a bus, always ask that a blessing be showered upon each and every one of them as they go about their vital missions in support of ourselves. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman Miller, you want to lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, on the nation where we are, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Miller?
Here.
Rosato?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Knopf?
Here.
Chanset?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Euer? Saron?
Here.
McFadden?
Here.
Thank you. Thirteen present, one absent.
We have thirteen present, okay. We obviously have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Okay, moving to item number four, which is our annual meeting reminder that we ask that you all speak into a microphone, because this is being recorded by BAT for rebroadcast. And it makes it certainly clear for everybody to understand, especially when we have the mask on, we're trying to speak. As is normally the case, I pull my mask off my mouth during this meeting so people can hear me, because I have been subjected to quite a bit of comment that they couldn't understand what was being said by the mayor and others here at sometimes watching it on TV. So we try to make this as understandable. We got everybody down here socially distanced, so hopefully we're trying to meet all the rules and regulations as has been asked to do. Okay, moving to item number five, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on this agenda. Alderman, Chanset, do you have anything tonight?
Your honor, I have none.
Do we have anybody else? I have one that I guess I'm going to ask that we add under Matters from the Public for Items Not on the Agenda, which is obviously, there was a complete computer glitch and we didn't get this put on the agenda, but we want to have a presentation by the Batavia United Way folks, Bonnie Baumgartner and Nick Nagley, who are here to represent the United Way Board. So we'll do that as item number seven in tonight's agenda. Anything else from anybody else in the council? If not, then move to item number six, which is presentation of the consent agenda. Alderman Chanset, would you present that, please?
Indeed, your honor. The consent agenda reads as follows: To accept and place on file the Committee of the Hold minutes for February ninth and February sixteenth, 2021; building reports for February 2021; approvals: The March fifth, 2021 payroll in the amount of $950,492.15; the accounts payable check register in the amount of $1,305,659.22; City Council minutes for March first, 2021; Resolution 21-23-R authorizing the purchase of a Ford F-150 pickup truck for the Community Development Department in an amount not to exceed $29,275; Resolution 21-25-R authorizing execution of contract with Denler, Inc. for the 2021 crack filling program. Your honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Knopf? Moved by Alderman Chanset, second by Alderman Knopf. For the approval of the agenda as presented, any discussion? Kirk, please call the roll.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Wolf?
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knopf?
Aye.
Motion, thirteen, motions approved by vote of thirteen yes, no, no's, one absent. Okay, as per action under our items removed or changed on the agenda, I'm going at this time under number seven, for Matters from the Public for Items Not on the Agenda, do we have anybody who wants to speak other than our friends from the Batavia United Way? Okay, Bonnie, I'd recognize you if you would come up and use the mic, please.
Hello, I am Bonnie Baumgartner, Executive Director for Batavia's United Way. Thank you for having us tonight. I just wanted to give the community kind of an update on where we are with the COVID-19 fund and give a little bit of explanation on what Batavia United Way does. One of our partners, Lisa Foidell, is going to present on Kane County's 211, and Nick Nagley will wrap us up at the end. So, Laura? Okay. Batavia United Way's primary focus is on health, education, and income. These are the building blocks for a good quality of life and strong community. So, how do we do that? We are, our goal is to mobilize resources to meet community needs. We work with government, nonprofit, and for-profit organizations to form collaborations and partnerships to provide support programs while avoiding duplication. Our funds are raised during an annual committee, community campaign through employee giving and employer matching programs, and by organizing events in the community, such as a soup tasting event, our bat race 5K, 10K, and an SB six bingo event. Funds are spent by being invested into local programs that'll improve the lives of Batavians and build a strong community. Our core programs include Adopt a Family, which is an annual holiday assistance, allocations, which is the Batavia United Way grant process. This year, we're budgeted to give $125,000 out to local organizations, nonprofits in the area that help Batavians. The COVID-19 Relief Fund, Day of Carrying is a national program to encourage volunteerism in the community, and also our Success by Six, which is financial assistance for children under age six to get access to early education. So, as for the COVID-19 fund, so far, we have provided aid to 39 individuals with rent and utility assistance totaling over $20,000. Twenty thousand five hundred and fifty. We've provided over 250 bags of groceries. That was something we were doing early on during the pandemic. We've issued eight microgrants to local agencies, things such as RSVP, RSVP services, to allow them to continue transportation for their elderly clients, to BPS, to allow for additional mental health and counseling during the pandemic, and to purchase students' water bottles so they could have access to water, since fountains aren't on right now and a lot of kids weren't showing up with any water bottles. To mutual ground, we collaborated with Batavia Rotary to clean out their ductwork that hadn't been touched for over 50 years. Kane Senior Council for Meals on Wheels Program, Tri-City Health Partnership for assistance to their free medical clinic, Salvation Harmony for their rent and utility program, as well as purchasing iPads for seniors when their community rooms closed down and they had no longer access to any sort of internet or communication to the outside world. We also helped Homestead in building desks for remote learners. We helped fund that project. The initial 20 desks came out of their own budget, and then we supported an additional 12 desks being built. So overall, and all the combined assistance, that's over $40,247.14. And I think it's worth noting that only $13,000 of that came from state and local, or state and federal grants. All that rest of the assistance came from our own community. And at this moment, do you want to click? Yep, Lisa, I think you'll have to unmute.
Yep, okay. Good evening. My name is Lisa Foidell, and I represent Kane County 211, which is the number to call when you don't know who to call. The former executive director of the Batavia United Way, Melinda Kins, was very instrumental in bringing 211 to Kane County. And I just want to go over some of the, if you could go to the next slide, some of the statistics that we saw in the past year due to COVID-19. Prior to March last year, our call volume was roughly, in Batavia, was roughly between 10 and 15 calls a month. So you can see since then how much our call volume has risen. And it's stayed up there pretty high, except for May, which was an anomaly. I think that was when things started to open back up a little bit, and I think people got very positive about what was going on. It continues to be higher than normal, even in 2021. And our call volume is pretty much at the same ratio to the whole county. So, we, if you go to the next slide, please, you see that Batavia is number four in terms of the distribution of calls by zip code. St. Charles there includes both zip codes, which encompass Camden Hills as well. But Aurora is always largely greatly number one, followed by Elgin. And we are typically here in Batavia, number four in terms of the number of calls made to 211. And the next slide, please, shows you the types of things that people are in need of when they call 211. Housing and shelter was our very greatest need in the past year. It was also our greatest unmet need, because of the, some of the shelters were not taking people. So we did have some significant homelessness over the summer. But that did not impact Batavia as much as it did some of the other communities. But you can see, people call for a whole variety of reasons. The calls for mental health assistance and addictions has risen. And it's probably important for people to know that our call center is the Path Crisis Center in Bloomington, Illinois, and it is part of the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline. So when people call with those types of issues, they do get the help that they need. And if you go to the last slide, we have secured 50% of our funding for the next three years, looking forward, and that comes from the Kane County Government. Also, the township of Batavia has granted us, has granted 211 some funds for operations, and we are now using that information to go to other townships and secure funding from them. Melinda Kins is still actively involved in securing the funding, and we do believe that we will have sufficient funding for the next three years, once our first three-year term is up. It's pretty good to know that Cook County is finally now, due to COVID, taking the 211 very seriously, and they're looking at bringing it into their community, which would bring funding into both Cook and DuPage County. And that's through Metro Chicago United Way. And there is a project underway, Melinda Kins is part of it, to bring 211, to have 211 funded by the State of Illinois, so that it is available to all counties in Illinois. So that's something that's being worked on. It'll probably have to go to vote in Springfield, but we're hopeful that that's something that we can rely on in the future. And if nobody has questions, I'll turn it back to, to the people in residence there.
Good evening. My name is Nick Nagley, and I am a very recent resident of Batavia. And within a month of moving here, the United Way got their claws in me and asked me to join the organization. So I'm proud to be part of and a partner with Batavia United Way. And after my first meeting, I, I was kind of floored about the breadth of the offerings that the United Way has, and the impact that it can, and potentially have more impact in the community. So I had said to the directors, have, have we had any contact with the city council so that they can help us kind of deliver the message? It just so happened that I ran into Alden Saron, and the next thing you know, we're on the agenda here. So, my, my presence here is purely just to, to make sure that this organization understands our organization's resources, know that we kind of are a charity for charities, and we'll do our best to, to help out and fill needs where we can. So, we appreciate your time. If you have any questions or want to look into further partnerships, where you can support the United Way, info@bataviaunitedway.com. Or org, is it org? Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for your, your service and your willingness to volunteer so quickly, and appreciate your good efforts and already trying to make a difference for the good in our community. So, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Mayor, if I could also mention that the Batavia United Way was an essential partner back at the beginning of COVID, when the city partnered with the Batavia United Way and RSVP to create the Community Care Program. Our receptionists here, they were provided with a list of seniors in our community from RSVP, and we would call and talk with seniors to find out what their needs were. Most often, those needs were fulfilled by volunteers through the Batavia United Way. And that was very, very helpful to us. So, I want to thank you for that. The other way that the city works with Batavia United Way is in utility billing. In order to try to connect people who are having difficulty paying their bills, meeting their rents and utility expenses, Batavia United Way has been an excellent resource for them, especially during COVID times, to find the resources they need to meet their basic expenses. So, thank you guys very much for the excellent work that you do.
Can I, uh?
Certainly.
Ask a question, I guess? I mean, this was, I ran into Nick and we talked about it, and the 211, I think, is one of the greatest resources out there that nobody knows about. And that's what we were talking about, how do we get the word out? Can you shed a little light onto, you know, who mans this? And you showed some numbers as to, you know, some statistics as to what calls are coming in, but I think there's still a lot of people out there like, I don't know if that's a number I can call. And maybe shed a little more light as to, you know, that everyone can pick up a phone and can pick up a phone and, but let me know who's, who's answering and what you guys are doing. And then also, what are you guys doing to, to help get the word out, and how can we help?
I'll, I'll take that question. My name is Lisa Foidell, and I do the marketing for 211. It's, uh, it's paid for by a grant from the Dunham Fund, my, my marketing position here. So what I do is I cover the entire county, and I go out and I talk to people. I was at a school board meeting back in, gosh, I think that was November. I go to nonprofits, I talk to the food banks, I'm, I talk to people in hospitals, I talk to people wherever I can find an audience about 211. Truly is, people can pick up the phone and dial 211. And if you're ever curious, I would suggest you do that because you can call and find out what it would be like for any of your constituents to do that. We also have a toll-free number for people who do not have access to a, a standard cellphone, I'll say. So some people may just have access to a prepaid cellphone, and those are harder to, to work with, with 211. To triangulate all these calls, to get all of that set up was quite a big to-do because it is not in every community, and we want to make sure that people dialing 211 get to our call center. And then we are also in the process of bringing online a texting number, so people can text 898-211, and they text their zip code to that, and they'll get into the correct 211 data center. So we have a very close relationship, for example, with the schools. So while, everybody has, all kids right now have access to free lunches in the schools. So at various points in time, those lunches all went home with 211 flyers in them, for example. And the backpack mail that goes out every few weeks will often have a 211 informational piece in it. I go to farmers markets, I go to different community events. Unfortunately, there have not been a lot of community events this past year. I've done trainings with all the police departments in Kane County. And in fact, I recently got a call from the Batavia Police Department. They wanted additional cards. We hand out both flyers, informational flyers, and business cards that have a significant amount of information, and our information is available in both English and Spanish. So, you know, I'm hopeful that by being here tonight, that there are people who will watch this on NBA TV and make the connection about 211. If you're aware of any, anywhere that I could speak to other people, I'm more than happy to do it. I started this just before COVID hit, so I've been a little bit hamstrung, but I've made some pretty good progress in, throughout the county, getting people to, to realize the benefits of 211.
Another thing that's going on as well is partnership between the 211 and Kane County Health Department. 211 is a way for our seniors who may not have a computer or might not feel comfortable booking vaccine appointments on the computer. They can just dial 211, and 211 has a list of organizations and their phone numbers that that senior can connect to. So for instance, if a senior in Batavia was to call 211 and say, I need help setting up a vaccine appointment, they would receive the phone number for RSVP. And then the people at RSVP would both get them signed up for vaccine and in some cases also help them with transportation to and from their vaccine appointment.
Nick, I just want to say that if anybody ever has a rent or utility assistance request, they're always provided that information following up, and a lot of our different housing developments are well aware and have flyers and things on staff, too. So I think we could probably do a better job, at least promoting it socially from our social pages for the whole public, but those who really need the help are getting it driven to them several different ways.
Well, the, the thing that really intrigues me is the, it's a small slice, but the mental health and addictions, especially mental health, people are starting to open up but don't know where to go. So that, that's a great, it's a great start for people.
Right. Even through Suicide Prevention Services, maybe there's ways we could collaborate and stuff on.
That's a good idea, yeah.
Well, they're definitely in the database, right? So we have over 1,000 different human and social service organizations in the database itself. So people will get the, the information that they need based on their zip code. And I'll just say, too, if, if you drive around, you'll notice that sometimes it's posted at the fire department, and sometimes all of our baseball diamonds in Batavia and the football field at the high school have big banners about 211. And before I, I started doing this position, I had, I didn't pay attention to it because I, I didn't need to. So the information is there, and sometimes it's sort of like, you know, taking the horse to water, right? Just making sure that we can continue to talk about it more and more. And again, yes, social media is amazing, but the more we can put out there about it, the more people will know about it.
And take the opportunity, anytime you're meeting with our state legislators, to try to encourage this to become a statewide program. Illinois is just one of two states in the entire United States that don't have statewide 211.
Really? That's amazing.
Yeah, the other state is Arkansas.
Yeah, yeah.
Well. Thank you.
So I'd like to thank United Way for coming down tonight. I, you know, I've been certainly here a long time, and I've seen various versions of this situation, different names even than what we now are the United Way. And certainly, you know, when Melinda Kins came in and really kind of turned the program around and got going on the 211, and now certainly with Bonnie's leadership coming into play here, I'm thinking the sky's the limit here on where we can go with this program. And it's come together at a time when really, as Alderman Serrone just noted, we are, as a community, facing a little bit of a crisis, more than a little bit, a crisis with mental health. And you only need to review our ambulance calls that the fire department goes on, and most of the time, always assisted by the Batavia Police. And those numbers have enhanced themselves drastically over the last couple of years as things have unfolded here. And so this is a very, very, very valuable service that a number of people in this town are taking advantage of. And I think in a lot of cases, we probably have stopped some things from happening that were going to be very bad or negative, or we've turned some ideas around and got people counseling and support that they needed. So there's no way to judge the value of this, but this really has been a service that has risen to the occasion at a moment in our times when it needed to be raised. And I really appreciate, you know, the continued emphasis that the United Way is putting on this. So thank you from the community for what you're doing. All right. Item, moving then to anybody else in the public moment? I guess not. Moving then to item number eight is approval of a Class D liquor license for the application for the Colombian Club located at 1117 North Washington Avenue in Batavia. And who's got this one?
Mayor, this is Abby. I'm going to listen from the audience until after item number 11.
All right, thank you. Who should have this one? I'm trying to think. Should be government services.
Right.
Your Honor, I have that.
You got it? Okay.
Yep. So the Batavia Police Department has conducted an investigation and a background check determining whether the Colombian Club located at 1117 North Washington Avenue, the president, Aaron Wendiger, and the manager, Jason Stoffels, might be suitable to receive a liquor license in the city. All this, the documents have been submitted by the business, and we have no issues that would preclude them from receiving a license. So I'm not sure if the applicant is available, but I would move that we approve this Class D1 liquor license for the Colombian Club.
Second. Wolf.
Moved by Alderman Chansett, second by Alderman Wolf, for the approval of the Class D1 liquor license for the Colombian Club at 1117 North Washington Avenue. Any discussion from the council? Court, call the roll, please.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Serrone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Knop.
Aye.
Approval of the Class D liquor license for the Colombian Club is approved by a vote of 13 yes, no, 12 yes, one absent, and one not voting.
Two absent.
Two absent, okay. All right, moving then to item number nine, which is a proclamation commemorating the 30th anniversary of the Gulf War. And I apologize, I don't know if all of you got a copy of this or not. We just kind of got this together here in the last couple of days, and certainly, it's something that we needed to do because, you know, it happened 30 years ago. We have a number of people who are still living, many of members of our VFW, American Legion. And so I would like to present the following proclamation. It says, "Whereas the world of today is marking the 30th anniversary of the United States' military action known as the Gulf War, this combat effort is remembered for its importance in overthrowing and liberating the country of Kuwait and the removal of the hostile dictator Saddam Hussein from his country of Iraq. And whereas this military effort undertaken by the United States government and its allies is commonly referred to as the 1991 Gulf War and featured air, land, and water military operations, most regretfully, the lives of 292 American servicemen and women were lost during the battles of this effort. A number of others were injured, and many of the personnel received injuries that gave them lifelong disabilities, which were inflicted upon them and other members of troops working. And whereas members of the American forces included the names of personnel coming from Batavia, Illinois, many of whom today remain active members of the Batavia Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 1197 and American Legion Post 504, and often recall the challenges that they were faced with this member, during this memorable military operation, unfortunately, no known Batavia military personnel are reported to have been casualties in this American combat operation. And therefore, in deep honor and sincere appreciation for the actions and efforts taken by all American personnel in this high-profile operation, the members of the city council and the mayor of Batavia wish to place on file this proclamation as a statement of respect, admiration, and thank you to all those who committed themselves to this successful operation and ensured that the last 30 years have given our world a desire for peace and safety in the environment which all of us share." And this will be signed by myself as soon as this motion is made and approved by the city council. Somebody care to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman O'Brien, second by Alderman Serrone for the approval of the proclamation, and he had comments, questions? Court, call the roll, please.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Serrone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Knop.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
That one's approved. 13 yes, one absent?
12 yes, two absent.
12, okay. Still losing somebody here. We are honored tonight to have with us Carl Dinwiddie from the Batavia American Veterans of Foreign Wars, and I'm going to present Mr. Carl, and he'd like to make a couple of comments.
On behalf of the county and the city council, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor. Why don't you use that mic for the roll? I want to thank the city for recognizing the Gulf War vets. It's greatly appreciated, and the proclamation will hang in a very prominent place in our post down on Route 25. Just talked for a couple of minutes, one about the Gulf War and the second about the Batavia VFW. And as the council knows, I never talk more than two minutes. So the Gulf War, as the mayor said, and the proclamation says, was due to the invasion of Kuwait by Iraq, and the buildup started in August of 1990. It was called Operation Desert Shield, and they prepared for the war. And we had great leadership, we had great soldiers and airmen and sailors, and we had great equipment. With the leadership, we had General Schwarzkopf, who's known as Stormin' Norman, and they created a plan to actually win the war, and I'll, I'll get to that. The war itself was actually initiated on January 17, 1991, and if y'all might remember, it was called Operation Desert Storm. And the war only lasted until February 28 of 1991. So that's a little less than six weeks. And the draft had been eliminated in 1990, excuse me, 1973, so most of the American combatants were volunteers. And a little side note, my deputy, who was a longtime resident of Batavia, who now moved out to Denver, was in the Air Force at the time, and he was in on a lot of the planning. And he said, "Their planning, for the first day, they expected to lose 30% of all the aircraft that they launched." And as you may know or remember, we did not lose a single airplane. So it was a very well executed war, executed war. None of us like wars, but if you're going to have a war, get it done. About the post, we're down on Route 25, I think less than a mile out of town. We're situated on eight or nine acres between Route 25 and the Fox River. Everybody is welcome there. Little joke, this isn't your, the old commercial, this isn't your father's Osmobile. This is a new Osmobile, and this isn't the VFW where a lot of guys are sitting around and telling war stories. We actually have a very family-oriented VFW. I've been a member a long time, and we have families that have brought their kids there from the time they're little kids till they're adults or going off to college. And the term was, well, what's going on at the V? And they would bring their families down and, and have a good time. We're located, as I say, we have really a beautiful piece of property down there. And if, if you want to find out more, we're at VFW 1197. We have an events calendar there. We have membership details, and we also do assistance benefits. We welcome everyone. We have memberships for the veterans, for family members of veterans, or anybody in this, who wants to join and be a member can be a part of the VFW. Examples of what we've got coming up, and we did a lot of these last year in spite of the COVID. March 27, we have an Easter egg hunt with an Easter bunny. May 1, we have the Loyalty Day picnic, not a parade. March 15, we have a gardening sale. Excuse me, May 15, we have a gardening sale, and again, May 1 is the Loyalty Day picnic. May 22, we have a 5K run. May 29 through 30, we're going to do poppies from, poppies, poppies from, at Woodman's. And wasn't in my script, but if, I don't know if you're in the Beacon News, it was covered from the sale of the poppies, poppies from last year, we were able to get enough money and contributions to buy televisions for every veteran in the Illinois Veterans Home. And that way, they can see their family members and talk to their families. These are smart TVs, and we got a really good price on them. We're going to have concert series all summer on Friday nights, two per month. Fourth of July, we did this last year, since there wasn't much going on anywhere else, we had a Fourth of July kids' parade, and they all loved it. Since we have eight acres, they went all the way around, and we had various vehicles and... and the kids loved it. We sponsor the Cub, Cub and Boy Scouts in Batavia. Hope to see many of you there, say it's open, we're family-oriented, and you can find everything we're doing on our website. I appreciate it, and thanks again for the proclamation.
Thank you, and thanks for all the good work at Post 1197. You're a vital part of Batavia. All right, item number 10 on the agenda is Main Street. Do we have anybody online to talk?
Yes, Beth Walker is online.
Okay, Beth?
Hi. Well, right now, we have Restaurant Mattis going on. That's a joint project between the city and the Chamber of Commerce. That's now through Thursday. You get 10% off at participating restaurants. And then it goes again to, on the following Sunday through Thursday. So go out and support your local restaurants. The Boardwalk Shops Phase Two is on track. We should start to see construction on site by April. That's over, the shops are currently being worked on over at the high school. Our events committees have started to meet, and they're planning our event season. So that's about all I have going on today.
Okay. Any questions of Beth tonight? Thank you, Beth.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving to item number 11, which is Ordinance 2122, authorizing execution of redevelopment agreement with Marco Limited Partnership for building improvements at 18 East Wilson Street, which, for the old timers in the room, is the old Batavia National Bank building on the southwest corner of that intersection. Who's got this one?
I do, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Thank you. As you stated, this is a redevelopment agreement from Marco Limited for the building, which will house the new comedy club, the Comedy Vault. Many may remember that the business owners came in for the same type of grant, for seventy, $25,000 grant, and a $75,000 low-interest loan. That is for the build-out of the business itself. This one is for Mr. Marconi's building, the same terms, $25,000 grant, $75,000 low-interest loan. This is for the remaining term, which is approximately four years on the TIF. All of the items that are purchased on this will be TIF-eligible and will remain with the building. Mainly, it will be in regards to the installation of a fire suppression system, et cetera. This is being done with significant investment by the building owner and the business owners themselves. With that, I would move that we approve Ordinance 21-22, authorizing execution of a redevelopment agreement with Marco Limited Partnership relating to the building improvements at 18 East Wilson Street.
Second.
Knop? Okay, moved by Alderman Callahan, Second Alderman Knop for the approval of the redevelopment agreement with Marco Limited Partnership for the building improvements at 18 East Wilson Street. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll, please.
Callahan? Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Serrone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chanset? Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Twelve yes, two, or two absent?
Correct.
Okay. Motion's approved. Okay, moving to 12, which is Resolution 20-026-R, Approval of 2021 Zoning Map. Who's got this one?
I do, Your Honor.
Okay, go ahead.
This one is a pretty straightforward housekeeping item. Every year, we update our zoning map with any of the annexations or map amendments that we have approved within this past year, and that is done by March 21st. Again, this is just the official zoning map for the next coming year. This was not at the, at the count, but it was brought to this as it is every year. If no questions on it, I would move that we approve Resolution 21-026-R, Approval of the 2021 Zoning Map.
Second.
Okay, moved by Alderman Callahan, Second Alderman Rosato for the approval of Resolution 20-026-R, the approval of the 2021 zoning map. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll, please.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Serrone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Resolution 20-026-R is approved by a vote of twelve yes?
Thirteen yes, one absent.
Oh, thirteen yes, one absent.
Alderman Beck has returned.
All right, moving then to 13, which is Ordinance 21-21, Creating the Parklet-Pedlet Program. Who's got this one?
I do, Your Honor.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, so as we heard in committee, there's an opportunity to turn parking spaces throughout certain areas of our downtown into small parks or areas that businesses can use for additional outdoor seating and whatnot to help with downtown commerce. As we heard in committee, there's an application fee and a per-square-foot fee involved in this. We took some direction from other towns on how to execute this, and seemed to be favorable reaction from the committee. So I would move that we approve Resolution 21-21, Creating the Parklet-Pedlet Program.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Chanset, Second Alderman, Beck?
Beck.
Beck. And any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Serrone?
Aye.
McFadden? Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Thirteen yes, one absent.
Ordinance 21-21 is approved, thirteen yes, one absent. Okay, moving to 14, Administrator's Report. Laura?
Thank you, Your Honor. In addition to opening for the Economic Development Manager in the Community and Economic Development Department, we also have an opening for Building Code Enforcement Inspector position. And the reason that we have an open position there is because a longtime employee Rhonda Klez is retiring from the city after seventeen years. Her successor is going to have some huge shoes to fill. I cannot say enough about Rhonda's expertise, compassion, and just the competence with which she does her job. She has been amazing to work with, and we're really going to miss her a lot. I hope that we'll have the opportunity to perhaps invite her to meeting, our next meeting, so that we can all say thank you to her in person. The Plan Commission will have a public hearing on March 17th to discuss various amendments to the zoning code. Changes include easing some of the downtown signage restriction, the addition of an unclassified use to the zoning code, changes to regulations for breweries in the DMU district, and changes to certain administrative procedures. On the March 23rd Committee of the Whole Meeting, we're going to be presenting some changes to our peddler/solicitor/food vendor ordinances and clarify some of the restrictions and allowances for these types of ordinances. But we also want to discuss and how we would like to regulate food trucks. Of course, those have an impact on our brick-and-mortar businesses. We want to make sure that we do this in a way that is not harmful to their businesses, but, and yet allows some use of them as it would be appropriate. The Full Menards Building Permit is near completion and will be issued soon. This is going to be involving the new detention area and also the new storage building to be located on top of the existing detention pond on that north side of McKee Street. In Public Works, we are deep into our due diligence work on the 400-500 North Redant Building. We've done some initial building walkthroughs and inspections. And then also, planning efforts have begun for resumption of the Main Street construction project. The contractors typically rehire their workers starting in about mid-March, so expect that construction activities will commence sometime in mid-April. The Police Department has been working with public safety partners to establish security and site management plan for the upcoming mass vaccination site that will be located at the former Sam's Club at 501 North Randall. In a press conference today, Chairman Corinne Perrag appeared on, I think it was Channel 7 News in the midday, and was talking about this site and said that the city is, I'm sorry, the County Health Department on their website will have about midweek a link for people to begin to make appointments at this facility.
Hey, Laura?
Yes?
Just regarding that, I just wanted to give kudos, I think, to Mayor Shilke and Commissioner Dave Brown. I think they were somewhat influential in getting that taken care of.
Yes, for sure. Human Resources is just really busy. They've got a lot of open positions that they're recruiting for right now, and the electrical engineer, they were reviewing eligible candidates last week. They still have the open HR administrator position, which will be a big help for them if they're able to hire somebody for that soon. Police Department records technician, economic development manager, and as I mentioned, the building inspector code enforcement officer. And that's all that I have, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Any questions, Laura?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
Laura, you had mentioned about the peddler and solicitor program, and I saw that for next week. But I had a question. When Corona had kind of started, there was a solicitation ban for door-to-door permitting. Is that still in effect or not? I'm seeing an uptick in kind of yard work, people coming through and entities such as that. And I was not sure before I asked them if we were issuing permits again or not.
We are issuing permits again.
Okay.
Anybody else? Well, thank you. Okay, moving to committee reports, Community Development, Alderman Callahan?
Nothing to report, Your Honor.
City Services, Alderman Wolf?
No report, Your Honor, thank you.
Government Services, Alderman Chanset?
No report this evening, Your Honor.
And Public Utilities, Alderman O'Brien?
Nothing to report, Your Honor.
Very good. Do we have other business to come before us tonight? Well, under 17, the mayor's report, I just want to make a couple of observations. Number one, I publicly want to thank everybody in the community who has worked with us to get this COVID vaccination facility set up. And I cannot say enough very nice things about our county board chairman, Corinne. She's worked very, very hard, and, you know, I feel good that she's a Batavia resident beyond being the county board chairman. But she really has had some issues to deal with here because beyond King County, this thing, there gets to be a lot of politics in this, I mean, at a very high level, and it's all gets into who's going to get the vaccine and who's going to administer it, and what private businesses are getting their hands on vaccine and how they're distributing it. And it's just been a very challenging situation to deal with. And when we got into the building as late as today, we had some folks attempting to start a rumor that this thing was not going to happen. And we, I think, got that taken down and put away for bed for the night, hopefully forever. Corinne called me this afternoon and indicated that the plan right now is, is that they're going to open the facility up on Friday morning, this coming Friday morning, the 19th, at 7:30 a.m. in the old Sam's Club. And if, she extended to me an invitation to invite any of you who may like to come out and just see it and hear what they got to say. I suppose there's going to be a couple of minutes of speeches. And then the men and women of the Illinois National Guard are coming in there, and they're going to take it over and run it. And there's a couple of people I really need to mention in here. One is certainly our police chief, Dan Yule, who has been very deeply involved in this thing and has been working very diligently to make sure that specifically, as people arrive there and the traffic starts generating, that we got control over that. And I think we got a plan that's going to do it. You're going to have to register ahead of time and get a time that you can come in and get your shot. You just can't pull in there and say, here I am, shoot me with a vaccine. And the county tells me that the numbers, they potentially feel, there's over 400,000 people that could be wanting to come in and use this. And so their, the last conversation I had with them was, is that they're thinking they're probably going to be there through November, and they will be going forth with it. The other one I want to specifically mention is the Batavia Fire Department and Chief Dikey. He's had to work, because there's been situations at other places where they have this, that they're giving the shots, and some people start to get ill, and they may faint or pass out or whatever have you. So we had a fairly lengthy discussion about the tricity ambulance and how that would work. And as it was pointed out at our meeting last Friday morning, right now, we have six ambulances on the street, two in St. Charles, two in Geneva, and two in Batavia. And the way this thing lays itself out, that Sam's Club Center out there is probably in the best spot we could get it, because it's equally within about a mile and a half away from the West Side Batavia Fire Station and the West Side Geneva Fire Station. So if there's a need and somebody's already busy, the other one can run in and take it, or one of the other stations can come. But we're thinking we do have the ambulance things under control, and that will be ready to go ahead and put everybody in there. It's been amazing to me to listen to the number of Batavia residents who were so anxious to get this that they went to extraordinary means to get it. And I mean, to some degree, that some of them even traveled into the city of Chicago and got an appointment at one of the retail businesses that was getting it in. And then that got some angst going with the city of Chicago, because they were hoping they could get a lot of their residents shot, and then there was a whole bunch of people from the suburbs coming in there. And so, I, there's a lot, I don't want to get into it, but there's been a lot of moving parts to this thing. This has been, I would describe this as a political experience unlike any I've ever had in my now ten terms in office as mayor of the Batavia because of the, all the moving parts to this thing and all the different ways it goes. And at the end of the day, it's all about life and death and making sure everybody gets their shot and gets taken care of. And I'm not sure, you know, hopefully, we'll have most of Batavia shot here by sometime in the middle of the summer, and certainly make the opportunity available to them, but there will be that. And the other interesting thing is, I've had a number of my Randall Road businesses contact us and say to me, the city, that they would like to know, you know, if there's anything they can do. Some have talked about offering a coupon to somebody after they get a shot, if they want to stop and get a sandwich, or they wanted to stop and shop, or whatever have you. There's people who would like to be supportive of this whole thing. So we got, there's a good sense of community flowing here that really, I think, is good for Batavia to see and speak. And as, you know, our friends from United Way already talked about earlier, we as a community really are very fortunate to have the outstanding group of citizens that we do have. And I mean, you only had to stand by at the most recent Christmas toy drive, which we also ran out of the Sam's Club business or building. And I might know, they let us in there for nothing, didn't they?
That's correct.
To host that. I mean, we had some very generous Batavia people show up out there with very large checks that they just wrote, put a smile on their face, and walked out the door and said, turn it loose and do a good thing with it. So, I mean, there's, Batavia's got a heart of gold. And as has already been mentioned, we had some people in the senior community that kind of got themselves lost because they don't have computer skills. And we've had several people, I'm not going to name names, because I don't want to dump any more work on some of these people than they've already had. But we had some real angels in this town that really stepped up and provided guidance and got people shots and got them rides and everything else that needed to be done. And so it makes me proud to be the mayor of this town when we have that type of activity going on in Batavia. So Batavia's very, very fortunate. In a moment of crisis, that I think we've risen to the occasion and done most of what we should have done and can do to kind of bring ourselves into the protective cover of this whole thing. And let us, you know, hopefully forget about the missteps and put ourselves on the right road and get this done. So again, I appreciate that, and I thank, certainly thank the city council for your support. As I mentioned to you, and we had to get into this thing in a pretty much of a hurry, and there became some questions about certain things. One of the things that came up was, who's going to pay the light bill out there in that building? So I suggested that, you know, I've got a whole bunch of people who are really, tears in their eyes, crying to me about when can I get a shot? I suggested that the city council, City of Batavia, would step up and we would cover the light bill. Now, Laura and I have talked about this, and we've already changed the billing over to the city, so they won't even see the bill. But we are of the opinion that we're probably going to be very easily eligible for some of this federal money that's being appropriated to cover costs associated with this that we'll be able to cover. So our electric utility won't be taking any hit at all on, you know, that we gave away electricity. If we had, I would be the first one to want to stand here and defend it, because we need to have the lights on there. One of the things they liked about that building was, it's got this big refrigeration system from the days when Sam's Club was in there. And one of the things you need at vaccine world is refrigeration. So we had that, and they also have a big row of washrooms over there. And that's another thing that this type of building needs. And so, you know, you got the parking lot, and we got the stoplight, and we got restaurants across the street. Talking to our friends from the National Guard, that was one of the things they were very interested in, was where can we eat around here? So it's all come together pretty good. And so Friday morning, 7:30 a.m. out there is when I'm told we are going to open the door and cut the ribbon and get things started.
I just want to say, you know, with the electric bill, I mean, if we weren't getting any subsidies from, from the federal government, we would have been doing it anyway. That was the decision made. And I want to just congratulate you again, Mr. Mayor, because, you know, we took a leadership role, the city took a leadership role throughout King County as a municipality. And it's a boon for our residents, but it's also a shot in the arm for all the residents of King County.
Well, we're going to have a lot of other residents from King County in on Randall Road. Maybe they'll stop and shop and drop a few sales tax dollars on us. So there should be some sidebar benefit. But we're really fortunate, we got Chief Yule and the Batavia Police Department and the Batavia Fire Department sitting there with us, and they're going to maintain some pretty tight control over it, so it doesn't impede business or people go crazy or whatever have you. So it's one of the things we were told when they said, well, just open the door and start giving shots, you get all kinds of people coming in the door you never heard of, and you don't know what the stories are. So then you have to have police sitting there all the time and everything else. So I think we've got it all designed down, and everybody understands how the rules are and how the game is played. Alderman Serrone, you want to say something?
Yeah, I was just wondering, I mean, this happened really fast and is impressive, but do you, when can people start registering, and where do they do that?
According to the press release, they said midweek, so perhaps Wednesday, or possibly not until Thursday. But they're going to have some type of, on their website.
Phone number. Yeah, address or phone number.
Yeah.
That will be publicly published, and everybody can get it. And we'll put it out, you know, I'll mention it on my weekly thing and everything else. So we'll try to get it out to everybody.
Okay.
All right, no further business. I entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
So moved.
Moved by O'Brien, second by Serrone. Kirk, take a voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting stands adjourned. Thank you.